Good evening, everybody. This evening, the City of Peabody in accordance, the City of Peabody zoning board of appeals meets remotely tonight in accordance with Massachusetts general laws and Governor Baker's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, which for us will change in June. This special meeting of the zoning board of appeals will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but that will change in June. But every effort will be made to ensure that the public adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. Individuals may participate remotely in the meeting via a participation platform called Zoom. This evening, we have a continued application of Forty Oak Street, which by the way, the meeting was opened August 5th, 2019, for anybody that was interested. Before we begin, we, I need a motion to accept the following correspondences. The Hancock response to Mr. Beal's memo, the Hancock revised site plan, the Hancock storm water, Mr. Will Politz's memo, Hancock's response to Mr. Will Politz's memo, and Counselor Pete McGinn's memo and photos. May I have a motion to accept those correspondences, please?
Motion to accept the correspondence.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So I believe at this point in time, I'm going to open it up to Attorney Smolak, if you please, sir.
Sure. Good evening, Madam Chair and other members of the board. For the record, John Smolak, attorney with the law firm Smolak in Vona, North Andover for the applicant Forty Oak Street Development LLC. With me this evening are Michael Larkin and Patrick Larkin, principals of the applicant, as well as Joe Pesnola of Hancock Associates, our project engineer, and Scott Thornton of Van Assen Associates, our project traffic engineer. Since our last meeting back on March 21st, projects team has met with the city, including the board's peer review consultants, in order to ensure we are covering the remaining outstanding issues of regard to the project. In fact, since our last meeting before the board, the applicant has received those materials, Madam Chair, that you outlined with respect to traffic, wastewater, water service and fire protection, stormwater and environmental, as well as the information that was included as part of the peer review comments from World Tech Engineering on traffic, as well as the comment letter from Horsley-Witten Group on stormwater and environmental review. And again, since our last meeting before the board, the applicant has submitted, as you had indicated, the updated stormwater information. New test pin information has been gathered on site on March 26th as well. And two additional memorandums or letters have been submitted by Hancock, as you had suggested. So with that said, I'm not sure, I'm fairly sure the board hasn't had the opportunity to thoroughly review our latest response letter. And so with your permission, Madam Chair, I'd like to turn the discussion over to Joe Pesnola to summarize our latest responses. I understand that the board's peer review consultants are present as well, so whatever format you prefer to take, we'd be happy to proceed in that manner.
It's up to you. Whatever you want, just find with me.
Okay. Then, thank you. Then we'll, I'll turn the discussion over to Joe Pesnola of Hancock Associates.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, Joe Pesnola from Hancock Associates offices at 185 Center Street in Danvers, Mass. We have been working closely with Mr. Politz, Ms. Bernardo from Horsley-Witten, and World Tech Engineering, Scott Thornton from our traffic engineer from Van Assen Associates has been working with World Tech to answer all of the prior comments to date. We think that we're doing very well in whittling away the issues and getting the information transferred to those that need to see it, and making sure that, you know, we have addressed those issues. It's a very lengthy memorandum that tracks the comments as we move forward. I don't know that the board wants to necessarily go through each and every comment, but safe to say, I can break it down into kind of categories to, and update the board as far as where we stand on those issues. With regards to the stormwater, we have been working very closely with, again, with Mr. Politz and Ms. Bernardo regarding the stormwater system. It's a complicated system because there is city drainage that runs through the property. And originally, we were, there was a call to separate the onsite drainage from the city drainage and run a dedicated city line. But that's, that was determined to not be, not be possible. And we showed that information to Mr. Politz and Ms. Bernardo and had a meeting to talk about it. And we all came to an agreement that it couldn't be done, so that we needed to have kind of an integrated system. Additionally, there, what happens in some of the smaller storm events, smaller flood events, larger storms that below the 100-year, is the parking lot floods at the Elks. So we, the city drainage system in Oak Street relies on that flooding. It acts like a detention area, if you will. So we needed to incorporate within our design an equal amount of storage to that ponding because it wasn't acceptable to continue to have that ponding on a new residential project. So we've put that underground. So, Carl, I don't know if I can share my screen, so I could pull up the plans. Might be easier to point to things as I go to them. Can we see that? So again, there's a municipal drain that runs from Elliott Place and Little's Lane through to Oak, and that's the drain line that I was talking about. So we've integrated that into our system, and this crosshatched area up in here is actually an underground system of concrete chambers that provides an equal amount of storage to what now ponds on the surface, and just puts that underground. So that allows us to hold back the water and let it out at the prescribed rates into the, into the Oak Street drainage system, so that it doesn't overwhelm that system. Additionally, with regard to the stormwater, there was a call for some additional soil testing. We went out there. Mr. Politz witnessed that testing. We had an infiltration system in the back that we did soil testing and another one in the front. We found that in the back, there's just unsuitable soils for infiltration, so we've removed that system. And in Mr. Politz's last, latest correspondence, he's asking us in exchange for elimination of that. He understands that that's needed because of the soil conditions, that he wants this system in the front to be expanded, and we've committed to do that. We haven't done it yet, as we just received the comments on the 27th, but we will do that in short order and have that, have that ready. So I think by and large, we are very close to wrapping up the stormwater, so that hopefully the next correspondence from your team will be that all the stormwater issues are, have been, have been put to bed. With regards to the, I guess the next issue is the floodplain. The floodplain is throughout the site at elevation 27, and there's a requirement that we can't, we can't take up any additional flood storage, you know, within the site. We need to, before and after has to be the same, because if we filled the floodplain, then we would send the floodwaters to other places and make situations worse. So we presented calculations within that regards, and I think we're pretty close. There's just one elevation, incremental elevation between elevation 20 and 21, where there's some questions as to if we are, in fact, providing that equal volume. There were also some peripheral commentary with regards to the floodplain, with regard to identifying areas for residents to relocate their cars in the case that we're looking at a significant flooding event. Mr. Politz has provided, I think, seven or eight dates in history where flooding has been, has occurred in this area that would warrant something like that. And we will look at those states and look at the rainfall amounts and then target, you know, a forecasted rainfall amount to incorporate into our management teams on resident outreach program for those emergencies, to have the vehicles relocated. They also called for the dumpster in the case that we're forecasting such a flooding event that the dumpster be removed from the site for a period of time during the flooding event. And we've, we've committed, committed to that, work with the trash contractor to, again, if there's a rainfall amount that is forecasted, and as we're implementing the plan, we will, we will take care of that as well. Mr. Politz called for the fire department to, to again, comment on our emergency response plan that we had submitted last March. We really haven't heard formal feedback from the fire department on that. If those of you that maybe don't recall, because it was, it was so, so long ago, and there was a pandemic between then and now. Our call, our plan is to stage the fire truck on Oak Street, just up the hill from the site, outside the floodplain. And we've provided exhibits where the ladder can be swung to the front, to the patio here at the front of the building. We've rearranged the internals on the building itself for that, for that ladder to be used for an evacuation. The fire chief had mentioned originally, you know, yes, they could, you know, the residents could shelter in place because their residents are above the floodplain, and we can move the cars, but what happens if during a flood event, they need to maybe take, do a medical evacuation of a patient? So we've come up with that plan in, in a manner that everything can be done outside of floodwaters, and we're not asking any emergency vehicle, emergency vehicles or emergency personnel to go, to go into the floodwaters. So, so I think we're on top of the floodplain issues with regards to the requirements that we're, that we need to abide by. With regards to the infrastructure, we are calling for replacement of some water main in Oak Street, and Mr. Politz is looking for a little different location and amount of water pipe, and we're happy to comply with that and provide that increased, or that modified infrastructure. With regards to sewer, I think we're, we're set on understanding flows and so forth. Mr. Politz is looking for a little help. They had done inspections of the pipe, pipe runs in Oak Street a while back to understand that infiltration and inflow that might be going into that system. But he would like us to do manhole inspections, so happy to do that. And I think he is in agreement that that could be a condition of approval that prior to the start of the project, that we provide that, that information to him and Public Works in the Sewer Department. And we've committed, obviously, to pay the INI fees that would be, that would be applied to a project of this, of this size with the number of bedrooms and so forth. I think with regards to the World Tech correspondence and the commitments that we've made to intersection improvements and pedestrian improvements along, along Oak Street, I would like to turn it over to Scott Thornton, just to kind of give the highlights of those commitments and where we stand with regards to those issues, because I think much the same, we are, we are in pretty good shape. Scott?
Yeah, thank you, Joe.
Do we still want to share the screen?
Sure.
Okay, I see it.
So, yeah, if we want to go with that letter, sure, that's fine. So, Madam Chair, members of the board, good evening. My name is Scott Thornton. I'm with Van Assen Associates, and we prepared the traffic study and subsequent memorandums and responses to World Tech and Department of Public Services. We're in receipt of the DPS comment letter from Mr. Politz's office dated April 27th, provides comments on our last response letter that was dated March 10th. And, you know, as, as Mr. Pesnola had indicated, we're, you know, in general, we're just trying to resolve issues related to traffic, and, you know, I think the peer review process, you know, I'm a firm believer in that it makes the project better. We think we've narrowed the list of outstanding items to just a few that were, as noted in the DPS letter. I don't want to go through all the items, but, you know, there, as Joe indicated, there are some highlights. You know, in general, the applicant is proposing to address improvements at a number of locations, including providing some money towards signage and striping, about $5,000, at the intersection of Oak Street and Winter Street. Applicant is also proposing to contribute $65,000 towards the milling and overlaying of Oak Street to address the pavement conditions there. The applicant had initially proposed to contribute the sum of $20,000 for the purposes of sidewalk upgrades along Oak Street for curb extensions at the intersection of Washington Street and Oak Street, as well as towards the purchase and installation of bus shelters on Washington Street for the bus line that runs out there. DPS and World Tech had requested a larger sum, something close to $50,000. We're proposing to sort of meet in the middle at $35,000 for that contribution, which we think will go a long way towards, towards implementing those proposed changes. There's also a request from DPS to have the applicant join the North Shore Transportation Management Association for a five to 10-year commitment. And our concern is that the North Shore TNA may not provide resources for the residents of the project in the timeframe that we're, that we need them for. And in addition, the applicant has already pledged to implement certain measures, including posting of public transportation schedules, letting people know about the, about car and van pool resources, as well as, as providing the provision for the bus shelters on Washington Street, which are all very strong encouragements to use other forms of transportation besides personal vehicles. Therefore, we are of the opinion that membership in the North Shore TNA, which is a, which is a considerable amount of funds, is not something that's, that's necessary for this There are items related to, like, snow storage and dumpster locations. You know, we're, I'll let Joe touch on some of those in more detail if necessary, but we're proposing to implement a snow, a snow removal management program, which, which will put it on us to, to contract with, with private contractors to remove the snow when it gets to be a certain point. And similarly, trash removal is going to be by a private contractor, and we expect to develop that plan in the very near future. I think that's it for traffic.
Thank you. World Tech did comment on the parking, and on, there has been, we are proposing 22 tandem spaces, and there have been comments with that regard. If we count those tandem spaces, we're at a 1.58 parking ratio. If we do not, it's at a 1.27. And World Tech concluded that on the average peak demand is 1.23. So even at, even if we don't count the tandem spaces, we are, they believe that we are good to go there. The way that we're going to administer the tandem spaces is, obviously, the tandem spaces will be assigned, and they'll be assigned to two people in the same unit, so that they can work out, similar to husband and wife moving their cars in a driveway, which is very common scenario. With regards to the snow storage, there was a question as to the sufficiency of the space that we're providing for the snow. We've identified those areas on the plan, and what we would propose to do is, is come up with a comprehensive snow management plan, working with the ultimate manager of the property and the snow removal contractor, work those, all of those details out with regards to making sure everybody understands where snow, where it's okay to plow snow, how not to impact the parking spaces, and also when we would, at what point we would need to get to, to have to remove snow from the site and dispose of it properly. So we would look for that to be a condition of any approval, putting that comprehensive snow management plan together with those parties once they're, once they're in place contractually, to detail the plan to, to a sufficiency that everyone can, can review prior to starting construction. There was some, Mr. Politz had mentioned the wetlands on the adjoining property, which is owned by the Peabody Historical Commission. We have shown that wetland from historical mapping that goes back five or six years, and a call was made to refresh those, that delineation. We'd originally said, well, we need to do that as part of filing with the Conservation Commission, because that we are going to be, we are working within the buffer zone of that wetland, and we'll, you know, felt we had to, we would have to flag those wetlands before that process, but he believes that it's prudent to do that now, while we're still in this process, and, and we will be dispatching a wetland scientist out to the site. We're securing the necessary permission from, from the Historical Society. We can't go onto someone else's property and flag, but we are, we have made contact, and we're gaining that, that approval, and we'll get up, get out there and do that and then update the plan prior to the, to the next meeting. So bounced around a little, little bit, Madam Chair, but I think those are the highlights. We will look to Mr. Politz, Ms. Bernardo, and World Tech to obviously review not only this correspondence that we submitted today, but subsequent, we have committed to, within this correspondence, providing additional information, some tweaks to the plans, and information that they feel is still needed to finish up their, their comprehensive technical reviews. We'll do all that, get that all done and buttoned up in advance of, in advance of the next meeting. Happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Do we need the shared screen anymore?
I can stop sharing and reshare if we need to.
Okay. Will, would you like to speak? Mr. Politz?
For the record, William Politz, city engineer for the Department of Public Services. I think Joe and Scott, or Mr. Thornton and
For the record, William Politz, City Engineer for the Department of Public Services. Um, I think um Joe and Scott or Mr. Thornton and uh Joe Pezzanola, I think they pretty much summed it up. I think since the last time we uh met with the board on this project, um, we were reviewing the applicant's submittal uh and waiting for soil testing to be completed, which was, was completed. Um, as Joe had mentioned. And due to the um conditions of the soil, Hancock revised the set of plans. Uh, so we conducted a second review on that. So that's sort of where we stand at the moment is we reviewed the recent set of plans. And they provided their uh comments this evening uh back to us. Um, I do believe they're getting closer. Um. So I think we, at this point, I'm wait to get the latest set of plans and provide our feedback at that point. Um, if it's okay, I'd like to be able to open it up to see if uh Alan or Janet, Alan from uh World Tech or Janet from uh Horsey Witten Group would like to add anything at this point.
I guess I can add a little bit. And, and Alan Cludier from World Tech Engineering, we provided the uh review of the traffic uh components. And I think they actually did a pretty good summary of where we are and where we've come for this project. Um, the only, and, and most of these items we've reviewed, we've, you know, we had comments, they've been addressed. A couple of the, really what's outstanding, um, the parking, but not so much exactly uh directly the parking. You know, we, we did have a little concern about the tandem spaces because, you know, who wants to be blocked in, even if it is, you know, your wife and you have to work that out. Um, without one good way of, of really, I mean, ultimately trying to have this development not be completely dependent on, you know, two vehicles uh per unit or, or what have you, is to um really try to make it convenient for people to get to public transportation. Uh, so that kind of lends itself towards the mitigation that was kind of described about making sure people can um, you know, the sidewalk along Washington, uh, along Oak Street to get to Washington Street, the bus shelters. So I think we kind of were focusing more on not so much directly the parking, but minimize the need for parking by doing the mitigation. Um, and then I think right now it's, it's in that negotiation stage essentially. Um, we'd had one comment about the driveway detail that I think they um were planning on addressing. Um, the entrance driveway needed a little bit modifications, nothing major. Um, but besides that, I think, you know, that's where we are. We're basically talking mitigation in a driveway.
And um, this is Janet Bernardo with the Horsey Witten Group. And we've reviewed the stormwater management of the project. And from a stormwater point of view, you know, existing site is a large parking lot, so it's uh impervious. So the applicant is re, kind of required to meet the maximum extent practicable for that point, from that point. So the stormwater itself is not um, they're, they've worked through most of the comments as uh the applicant, Joe had, had kind of gone through it, it made sense what he said. And the main concern, I think, becomes the flooding and that this ex- existing parking lot does flood and how that will be managed in the future with residents um living there. So that they do have cars and, and that people go away on weekends and understanding how to manage the cars um and the residents in the event that a flood happens. So from the stormwater point of view, I think that they um have done a relatively good job. There is a blue roof so that the large building will be storing wat- stormwater on the rooftop itself. So that will in essence take some of the flooding off of the parking lot that is there now. So, and they are proposing a large subsurface chambers um that Joe went through. So there is a good potential that they're going to improve the existing situation. But it, it still is a, a large parking lot that floods. So um, as long as that's not kind of lost along the way, the stormwater should work itself out.
Thank you. Mr. Beals, do you want to chime in on anything?
Uh, I, I don't have any uh prepared comments. I, I second what um Janet said, that we should not lose sight of the fact that this project is within a hundred-year floodplain. And it should be designed to protect the residents. And it sounds like there's additional uh revisions that need to be made to the plans. Um, my suggestion to the board was, would be to set up a schedule such that there's sufficient time for the applicant to make the changes. Uh, deliver the information to the town and the, the city and the peer reviewers. Give everyone sufficient time to look at it and respond back to the applicant. So that um, I, I think we could come to these meetings with um uh better analyzed and, and a more comprehensive review of if there's sufficient time to uh have the exchange of information back and forth.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Smolak, do you have anything to say at this point?
Uh, Madam Chair, now at this time, uh, that concluded our presentation for this evening, which was basically an update. Uh, we have a fair amount of uh, uh, work to do to update our plans. We also owe the uh, the board an updated waiver list as well, so we'll, uh, we should deliver that as well.
Okay, so how much time, oh, how much time are, are we talking, do you think?
Well, I guess it's a, a function of, uh, if you're asking me, Madam Chair, it's a function of uh our question to Hancock, I think, in terms of what they feel is a reasonable time to uh update the materials.
There's, there's not much left, so I, I think we can have that done by early next week. So it would be a question to, so Mr. Politz and, and the peer reviewers as far as um they're necessary to around time on that.
Okay, Will, do you think that um we can have this buttoned up and everybody with their revised and updated and everybody's information by May 17th? That's two weeks.
No.
No.
No, not if we're receiving this next week.
Okay.
That's too quick, yeah.
How about the 24th? Are we meeting the 24th?
No.
Oh.
That's another Monday.
Well, um, so we, we do not have a meeting on, on the 24th. Um, so at this point, it looks like Attorney Smolak, um, it doesn't look like you're going to be ready by the end of the month. We can't meet on the 31st because that is a holiday. So um, do you think you will like to ask for an extension?
Yes, yes, we, we have this additional information to provide to the board. So uh, I guess the question is uh, to what date is the board considering for a continuance to?
Give me a minute. Okay, everybody, our regular meeting is the 21st of June. So today is the third. Um. We can pick, how about, how about June 14th? That, that gives you two Mondays in June, the 14th and the 21st for meetings.
Sure. And, and is, is the seventh out of the question or um? Talk to the board.
Um, well, okay, my board members right now.
And right now I would have a problem committing to the 14th.
All right, so let's look.
I can't move the seventh.
Who can't?
Uh, Dan Sensabaugh, cannot do the seventh.
Okay.
Not that I can't commit, but I, I don't know right now.
On the 14th?
Right.
Okay, so today's the third. We're meeting, and these are all Zoom meetings, next Monday. We have a regular meeting on the 17th, which is the following Monday. We do have one more Monday in May, which is the 24th. So what I'm asking is, Mr. Politz, do you think that's doable and all the other board members? I know I'm asking a lot, but do you think that's doable? And Barry, Barry, we can make it, we can make the 24th meeting start at 7:30 if you'd like.
Thank you, that would be great.
Will, what do you think?
Fran, my question would be back to Joe. Joe, when do you actually think we're going to receive plans from you guys?
We will say um no later than Tuesday, the 11th.
You have to stick to that now, if you don't mind, okay. Okay, Will, what do you think?
Uh, well, I think Alan, I think you guys probably, I mean, I don't want to speak for you, but I think your review is going to be pretty minimal at this point.
Mine is very minimal, so mine definitely won't be the concern.
Uh, water and wastewater are pretty much resolved at this point, so that leaves us with stormwater and floodplain management. And I think the 21E stuff is something we're looking for a condition from the board, so that shouldn't take any time. So Janet, what do you think?
Yeah, yeah, I think the stormwater piece is, is straightforward, that won't take any time. It's really how clear the calculations are for the floodplain. So if they come back very straightforward and, and easy to uh follow, I wouldn't have a problem.
Make sure they are.
And Joe, the, the other thing I would add is um, in order to, I guess, minimize the back and forths, uh maximize to the fullest extent possible the front infiltration area.
Yep, that's what we're going to do. I think that's, that's really the biggest change we have on to, to make right now is, is just tweaking that.
Okay, so everybody is on board for um coming back on the 24th. Excuse me?
At 7:30.
At 7:30. And you'll get a notice, Carla will, will make sure, there's no doubt in my mind that everybody is reminded of that. And Mr. Pezzanola, then you are going to do everything in your power to get everything definitely done by the 11th and done and sent, correct?
Yes, ma'am, yes, Madam Chair.
Attorney Smolak, you all set with that?
Yes, I am. I uh, thank you for, for accommodating the schedule, appreciate that.
Okay, so the 24th, we should be, we should have everything we need. Larry, Mr. Beals, what do you think? You will?
Yeah, I, I, that seems like a reasonable schedule. And um, what I like about the schedule is it allows them to get the information and it ensures that the peer review and uh the city has adequate review time. And inevitably, there's going to be another revision or something that's going to have to get done. So it probably accommodates that time as well.
Okay. All right, then, um. I need a motion to continue this until 7:30, May 24th. That also will be a Zoom meeting.
No moved. Second. Uh, excuse me, Madam Chair, I'm, I'm sorry, is there any public input at all or there probably wouldn't be, right, in the Zoom format? Or?
Um, I, I don't think so.
Okay. Sorry, sorry to interrupt.
Okay, so we have a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, um, all right, we will see everybody on May 24th, 7:30. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I?
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Fran, you still on?
I am. Okay, uh, let's see, let me um, let me get. I can't see everybody. Full screen. All right, so now we have presentation for 40 to 42 Endicott Street. But before that, we need a motion to accept some correspondences. Deanna, you all set for this?
Let's see.
We have uh letters in opposition uh that, maybe you could summarize that, eh, a letter from Ian Manning Martin for you to read. Do you have all that information?
Um, I, I think so. Hold on one second.
Okay.
This is, this is regarding uh the uh
40 to 42 Endicott Street?
Yes, so I have, I have a list of, of correspondence. Um, and I'll do what I did with the last set, um, because we've got about a dozen letters, so we're not going to read them all into the record. But what I'll do is I'll read them by name, address and uh summary of their concern. So I'm, I'm, I'm ready. Okay, so the first letter is uh Shan- from Shannon Fay at 11B Endicott. And um, she's in favor of additional housing opposed to the, of the location. And another concern of hers is the increased traffic. The second is Priscilla Chansey at 387 Warren Street. Her concern is traffic. Kim Seberg at Four Parkview. Uh, the concern is that the project was mishandled and that uh she questions the state approval. Um, too many 40Bs and PBD, um, R1A zoning district is not in a good location. Um, also concerned about the mayor's response to the state. Maria Sina Rosales at 46 Endicott, just generally opposed to this. Erin Murphy, 11 Endicott Unit 11, also generally opposed. Denise Kelly at 8 Parkview Lane. The concern is that this is a, uh, project is too large for a densely populated area and it would put a strain on the infrastructure and utilities. Also concerned about the traffic congestion, parking, public safety, and then just generally the reduction in the quality of life if this project were to be allowed. Uh, the next one was Gwendolyn Nevin at 37 Warren Street, just generally opposed. Uh, Donna Klein, 35 Warren Street, um, her letter says that this would be a, cause heavy traffic. Um, uh, adverse impact on the traffic and the safety, public safety. Um, cut through traffic, doesn't fit in with the neighborhood, not enough parking. Questions what the visitor parking would look like, uh, three to four stories would be better. Um, uh, a deduction of the number of units, the developer should meet with the neighbors to discuss what would work. Um, so she's got a whole list of concerns. Suzanne Murray at 8 Warren Street Unit 2. Her concerns are traffic, I mean, the elderly people would be unable to attend the Zoom meeting and uh to, to voice their concerns. Also that the project doesn't fit in with the neighborhood. There's already large complexes in the area, the, the applicant applied for a four-story, 42-unit uh, a building and didn't get what, what he wanted. So he's using his 40B to get what he wants. Uh, um. Another is Paul DiStefano at 52 Warren Street Unit 10, concerned with the traffic, traffic safety and that the police never uh, are around to catch uh vehicles which are speeding in that area. Steve Maddow is 25, Berry Street, generally opposed. Michael Raish, 43, Endicott Street, Department 1, public safety. Um, too big of, of a project and, and traffic were the list of concerns of, of Michael. Brad McIntyre, 50, 15 Berry, the project's too big. Uh, traffic concerns, congestion concerns. Kumar, uh, at 13 Endicott Street, um, concerned with overcrowding, uh, traffic, public, uh, safety, parking issues, and, um, signals too long. Uh, I believe it's the traffic signals that, that, that was the concern there. Farley Raish, 43 Endicott, um, concerned with public safety over development. And finally, Joe and Cindy Mello at 45 Bar, Endicott Street. They would like to see owner-occupied units at this location.
And there's one more, there's one more, Deanna. Uh, it came in a little late, from Robert Carrera. Um, he is in support of this, but has a concern of the old Public Works Building and some overgrown trees, um, around the area. Okay, so, um, is that all you have, Deanna, in front of you?
That's all I have. Do we now need to move to accept that correspondence into the record, or?
Yes.
Okay, so, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Do you have anything else in front of you to read? Okay, I'll, 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 I'll help you out here, okay?
Yeah, I was going to say, I don't think I do.
Okay. So, uh, I need a motion to accept, um, a letter in opposition by Ian Manning Martin.
So moved.
Any opposed? Okay. Um, I also need a motion to accept Attorney Panos's agreement to extend, extend the open, opening meeting date to 5/3/21. I don't have...
So moved.
It's okay. Thank you. Um, any opposed? I also need a motion to approve Attorney Panos's revision to development schedule.
So moved.
Any opposed? Okay. I also have a letter here from Commissioner Talarico. I need a, a motion to accept that.
So moved.
I need a second? Any opposed? Let me just go, there's only a few more. We also have a memo from Lucia Del Nigro, Conservation Commission memo, and a LEC revised wetland analysis. I need a motion to accept those?
So moved.
Record and a second. Julie, and we are all set? Any opposed? Okay. Now, we are ready for Attorney Panos's presentation. There you go.
Are we off, you?
You're off.
All right. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Jason Panos. I am the applicant's attorney on this matter at 4242 Endicott Street in Peabody. I practice law for the record at 246 Andover Street, Peabody, Massachusetts, and I represent the applicant, the residences at Endicott LLC, who is also the property owner. Um, the matter before this board is an application for a comprehensive permit under General Laws 40B, Sections 21 through 23, and supporting regulations at 760 CMR 56, proposing 68 rental apartment dwelling units at 40 to 42 Endicott Street, which is located in the Residence 1A zoning district. The application was filed with the city clerk on March 26, uh, 2021, when submission was compliant with the City of Peabody Comprehensive Permit Rules and Regulations, um, as completed. The proposed development under the application is deemed consistent with local needs, pursuant to the determination of project eligibility by the Massachusetts Housing Finance Agency by its letter of March 24, 2021, and that would be in Appendix A of your application's submittal. Uh, pursuant to which compliance with the provisions of 760 CMR, uh, 56.04 was concluded in favor of the proposed development. To introduce the project team, each member has significant experience with management, development, and maintenance of multifamily housing developments. Uh, Mr. Pat Tedesco, who is here with me tonight, is the manager of the applicant and through Tedesco Properties LLC, is the proposed developer consultant and contractor, who is expected to help see the development through completion. Tony Cappacetti of A's Engineering is the project manager, and will discuss the technical aspects of this application, including project plans, stormwater management, conservation, and traffic. Uh, and Dave Seabird is here with us tonight of BKA Architects, and he is the project architect, and will discuss the development design elements, and will work with the project team to bring the development to completion. Dean Harrison, who is not here with us tonight, is the, prepared the development pro forma. Uh, a brief overview of General Laws, Chapter 40B, and I think this board at this point is probably more an expert at this than I am. Um, but here goes. 40B, uh, authorizes the issuance of a single or comprehensive local permit issued by the zoning board of appeals with exemptions from generally applicable local bylaws and regulations. The statute was enacted to facilitate the construction of moderate-income housing and avoid perceived long delays in developers' proposals to construct affordable housing. Allow waiver of local zoning ordinances that are not consistent with local needs, and we provided a comprehensive, uh, list of waivers. We are seeking in Appendix 1 of your application package. Uh, the Mass Housing Project Eligibility Letter establishes the eligibility criteria, um, requirements pursuant to 760 CMR 56.04, um, which have been satisfied, and that the applicant, the applicant, rather, may proceed to the zoning board of appeals. That being that the LLC applicant is a limited dividend organization. The development is fundable, uh, through a subsidizing agency under a low or moderate income, um, housing subsidy program. Uh, in this case, the New England Fund. And the applicant has control of the site, uh, being the residences at Endicott LLC, uh, who took ownership of the site, uh, within the past few months. The zoning board possesses the authority to act for all local boards, which is broadly defined to include practically all relevant boards and officials, uh, through the City of Peabody. Uh, and for more information on that, you can see 760 CMR 56.02. Consistency with local needs is a central issue in a 40B application, and it means, among other things, that one or more grounds set forth in the regulations have been met. At the time of filing, the application, uh, Peabody's Affordable Housing Stock and Achievement Toward Its Housing Production Goals was not consistent with local needs, and was about 110 unit short of its subsidized housing inventory mandate of 10%. And its housing production plan was not yet eligible for certification. And the Board of Appeals accordingly must hear the instance application, uh, without regard to any safe harbor claims. The applicant, uh, the application, rather, is presented, as I mentioned, under the New England Fund Program administered through Mass Housing's Home Ownership, or rather Rental Program, and a funded guarantee source for construction of comprehensive permit developments, and which requires that 25% of the units be subject to use restrictions to ensure that they remain in a community's affordable housing stock, uh, and must be sold or rented on a fair and open basis. The residence of Endic, at Endicott is not subsidized housing. It is a mix of market rate and affordable housing designed to assist city residents earning at or below 80% of the area median income. That, to give you context, in a single-family household, for example, is a person earning about $68,000 to $69,000. That is, uh, an entry-level teacher, um, an entry-level firefighter, an entry-level, uh, uh, first responder, a nurse, uh, you, you name it. Uh, people in that income bracket, um, are, are not seeking subsidized housing, um, opportunities. They're, they're seeking opportunities to live in, in a project, uh, development as proposed here. Um, and we propose that up to 70% of the affordable units, uh, which would result in about 12 units, will be available for local preference, meaning that those who live in the city, grew up in the city, but can no longer afford to live here because of the exploding housing costs, will have access to these units so long as they meet the other eligibility criteria. So with that, I'd like to talk a little bit about, um, the application, the existing conditions, um, and the proposed development. Obviously, broad, broad strokes, uh, as the technical consultants will give you much more detailed, um, uh, presentations. So the site consists of two parcels of land at 40 Endicott Street and 42 Endicott Street, containing an aggregate of about, um, .72 acres, with access from Endicott Street via the property frontage, which is 261, uh, feet, and via a right-of-way easement to Berry Street at the southwest corner of the property over the City of Peabody's assessor's map, uh, 75 Lot 6, which is 5 Berry Street. And that is Appendix C in your packet. The site, in its present condition, is occupied by a single 19,625 square foot, one-and-a-half-story deteriorating and blighted brick-and-wood industrial manufacturing building. The site is not subject to any outstanding permits, orders of condition, and the like. The site with, with the current building on it, um, and we're giving you a little virtual tour. I'm sure each and every one of you has passed this building a million times or more. Uh, it's kind of become a part of the landscaping. But it's, suffice it to say, not in very good shape. It's an old building that houses a pre-existing, non-conforming industrial use, which is clearly not, um, not consistent with the uses in the neighborhood. Uh, and, and with this development, we propose, from a use perspective, uh, making, making the residential use consistent with the existing residential uses. Uh, existing uses, as I, uh, started to indicate, surrounding the site are primarily residential in nature, with a combination of single-family and multifamily uses surrounding the site, and with high-density residential uses consisting of a multi-story, 284-unit apartment building, the tannery adjacent to Berry Street at Wal, at Warren Street. Pardon me. The site is located in close proximity to interstate routes I-95, 128, 114, and Route 1, with nearby access to, uh, the high-density employment centers of economic activity along those, those, uh, interstate corridors and Centennial Office Park. The site is, as I indicated, accessible to Route 1 and the commercial corridor there, and is within commuting distance to, uh, many other regional centers of commercial activity, employment opportunities, and the Salem Intermodal Station, where residents will have easy access to the MBTA commuter rail into Boston through many of the MBTA bus, uh, service lines that run very, very close by, uh, the, the property site. Office and industrial uses are located in close proximity to the site, as I indicated, at Centennial Office Park, Route 114, Andover Street Corridor in Peabody's downtown. Restaurants and other retail shopping and recreational amenities are, uh, located close by at Peabody's downtown, the North Shore Mall, the Meadow Golf Course, and Farnham Park, uh, which is located almost adjacent to the site, with nature and conservation trails and opportunities nearby. Uh, for context, site amenities, Section 2, Appendix F of your application package. Um, do you want to run through, Tony, just very quickly, the, uh? Yeah, so that's, that's 42 Endicott Street, front entrance, looking kind of with your back to Lowell Street, facing Wilson Square. Next. Uh, this is looking directly from across the street to the front of the building at 42 Endicott again. Next. Uh, this is looking to the rear of the site from Berry Street. Um... Yep, next. And this is the, what the proposed development is going to look like with the same vantage points. Again, looking with your back toward, um, toward Lowell Street, uh, looking toward Wilson Square. And you can kind of see the, the proposed development takes advantage of the steep grade change, uh, and we're able to accommodate nice parking below the, uh, the structure. This is the vantage point from, with your back toward Wilson Square, looking toward Lowell Street. Next. This is, uh, this is behind. This is, uh, the vantage point from Berry Street, from that, basically, the city's DPW, former DPW yard. Are we done with the virtual tour? All right. So, the proposed development, uh, consists of a single pedestal-style, uh, building with four-and-a-half stories of residences on an on-grade and substructure parking garage, uh, containing 68 units of rental apartment-style housing. 17 apartment units are proposed designated as affordable, and 51 units are proposed designated at market rates, to be determined. Uh, a total of 88 parking spaces, with four accessible parking spaces total. Uh, 78 parking spaces and four accessible parking spaces located under the building are proposed. The remaining 10 spaces located at grade to the rear of the building. The proposed development parking ratio is about 1.3 spaces per dwelling unit. Sustainable design strategies include the integration of proposed exterior finishes, um, featuring natural products such as fiber cement, uh, panels, masonry, and glass. All heating and ventilation, uh, and air conditioning equipment, uh, and appliances for each unit will carry Energy Star certifications, and the development will seek certification as an Energy Star building designation. Traffic impacts, which are in detail, uh, as exhibit, uh, I'm sorry, Appendix G of your, um, application package, um, which was, uh, prepared by A's Engineering and is titled "Traffic Impact Statement" for the residences at Endicott, uh, indicate the following conclusions. Project traffic increases will not result in significant increases on overall traffic delays within the studied area. And I know this is important to a lot of the, uh, the, the people who took the time to, uh, submit letters to the board. So, um, we expect, uh, that traffic will be something we're, we're, we're looking at carefully, and we have looked at it carefully. Traffic, uh, expected to be generated by the development will be adequately accommodated within the existing infrastructure, provided at surrounding streets and ways. That would include pedestrian crosswalks and, uh, traffic signaling. Uh, the site driveways will provide safe access... The site driveways will provide safe access and egress with regard to site distancing to and from the development. The environmental report, which was provided as Appendix H, but as a separate supplement to the application materials because of its size, was prepared by Geological Field Services, and he basically concluded, Luke Fabry, the LSP, that site history was reviewed, and no recognized environmental conditions were identified. No further recommendation is, or investigation, is recommended. I want to take a very brief moment to discuss the LEC comments or the revised letter from Ann Martin, submitted to Lucia Del Negro, the Conservation Agent. Basically, the letter provided to you neglected to mention the local jurisdiction under the Wetlands Ordinance, City of Peabody Wetlands Ordinance, within two-hundred feet of a riverway. That is local jurisdiction, not DEP Wetlands jurisdiction under the Wetlands Protection Act. So we cleaned that up by providing a fresh letter from LEC, and I believe that Ms. Del Negro was satisfied with the analysis, that given that this is a comprehensive permit, we are seeking waivers from all of the local ordinances, including that would be applicable otherwise to this proposed development. And that includes the Wetlands Ordinance. With regard to permitting, the applicant proposes to obtain all local permits and approvals through the Chapter Forty-B Comprehensive Permit Process established pursuant to seven-sixty CMR fifty-six. Accompanying the application in Appendix K is that table I just referenced, containing all exceptions and waivers from provisions of the City of Peabody zoning ordinance and other City of Peabody ordinances, rules, and regulations, including that wetlands, local wetlands protection ordinance. A comprehensive permit may provide all local permits and approvals pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Forty-B, Sections twenty-one through twenty-three, and the cited regulation, enabling construction of the proposed multifamily development consistent with local needs. And finally, before I turn it over to the technical presentations, the applicant intends, under the current circumstances, to construct a development in a single phase with all permits granted by March twenty-twenty-two. That also includes anticipated building permit issuance. Construction start next April twenty-twenty-two, where we would begin the marketing of affordable units, or when we would begin the marketing of affordable units. Marketing of market-rate units would subsequently begin in January twenty-twenty-three. Construction, I'm sorry, twenty-twenty-two, construction completion would take place in June of twenty-twenty-three, with initial occupancy anticipated for next August. I'm sorry, August twenty-twenty-three. So with that, and through the board, through the chair to the rest of the board, I'd like to introduce Mr. Cappacetti, who will give the engineering technical presentation, and then Mr. Seber following on design.
Thank you. Tony Cappacetti with Hayes Engineering, six-oh-three Salem Street. As Jason went through, the site's essentially occupied by a large two-story, one-and-a-half-story wood-framed nineteen-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty-five-foot-square building. It's almost wholly impervious. There's a couple of small areas of grass. Interestingly enough, there's a water main that bisects the site and runs under the existing building. And then there's rights to the site to the fifteen-foot right-of-way. If you can see my cursor, running down through the center of the site is a six-inch line, goes down and feeds a hydrant, and I believe some of the features on the Public Works site. Almost wholly impervious, small area of grass to the west, and then around a small outbuilding. So the way we approached the design is, we tried to use this a significant change in grade from Endicott Street. It drops about eight, nine feet to the Berry Street side of the site. So we buried the parking garage at that lower grade, access from street level, and used that grade difference to maximize the site. In order to try and provide some green space, because, again, this site is almost wholly occupied, and the building's up on the street, there's a large patio at the front that sets back the first story, which allows us to provide some green space and some sitting areas on the street and really enhance the streetscape. And then we're replacing the existing sidewalks along the project frontage. And as Attorney Panos noted, the existing non-conforming industrial use doesn't really fit in with the residential uses in the area, so the proposed use is more conforming. Again, the site design is Endicott Street here to the north. The building overhangs this proposed cement concrete. It's kind of like a paverstone-type patio that's set back. We brought the the proposed sidewalk up against the building to provide some planting area of the trees in the grass strip. There is a parking deck that occupies about half of the building on the on-grade, which accesses here. And to eliminate conflict, it is a right-turn exit only, so you don't have a situation where someone is exiting to the right here or someone is exiting to the left from the other parking garage. The Eastally Site Drive accesses below the building, the the first-floor parking, as well as ten external spots. All the spaces are nine-by-eighteen. There are no compact spaces proposed with this site. And the parking ratio exceeds the ITE recommendation of zero-point-eight spaces per bedroom. We're at about zero-point-nine or zero-point-eight-nine. We do provide a concrete pad for dumpster, refuse, and recycling area. And then we provide for exit only on the right-of-way of the Berry Street. So the existing site access drive, again, as Jason said, has purpose-stopping site distance in both directions, that meets the ASHTO requirements. Over the course of the day, the project will have a marginal increase in traffic. There'll be about three-hundred-and-sixty-nine vehicle trip ends, and a trip end is basically a vehicle arriving or departing from the site. So two trip ends makes one vehicle trip. And the AM peak hour is about twenty-two trip ends with twenty-eight in the PM peak hour, and that's important because that's level of service analysis is based on the weekday peak hour. Because when compared to the previous use, being the general light industry use at the site, the peak hour impacts are actually less at a residential site than an industrial site. This is the table from the the traffic statement. Over the course of the day, there is an increase of about one-hundred-and-ninety-four trip ends from the previous use. However, during those weekday AM and PM peak hours, which level of service is dictated by, there is a decrease. So any level of service analysis done from the site would show that the existing roadway level of service would be the same or better, although with one vehicle trip, I don't think it's going to make too much of a difference, so it would pretty much be the same. As far as stormwater goes, the project was a redevelopment. There's a little over a thousand square feet of, thirteen-hundred square feet of new impervious surface. So what we do is we take all the roof runoff and infiltrate that with underground chambers at the rear of the site. Even though it's a redevelopment, we do meet the DEP stormwater standards, which include no increase in rate, and then the the city requires no increase in volume through the hundred-year storm. We infiltrate the clean roof runoff. We decrease untreated runoff from the impervious surfaces, so we are improving the stormwater, and we're providing recharge to groundwater, which is one of the requirements. Showing the site design again, this shaded area to the rear is the proposed underground chambers that will infiltrate the roof runoff. The site is served by public water and sewer. Ninety-nine bedrooms equates to ten-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ninety gallons per day of wastewater generation, which is on par for an industrial use, similar to what was at the site. And we're going to relocate that water main that goes under the building. So in blue shows the existing and proposed water services. This line that goes under will now be rerouted around. Our services for fire and domestic will come off of this new main, and we're going to upsize it to an eight-inch, just because it does feed a hydrant, and generally you like your trunk line to be an eight-inch line with your latals being six, and then we'll tie into the existing hydrant lateral to the rear. We are providing a hydrant at the front of the building, so we'll be able to tie into the Siamese fittings on the building in accordance with Fire Code. And then the existing sewer runs down the middle of Endicott, and we will have, from our mechanical room, a sewer service that ties into that trunk main. So landscaping and lighting, we have there's not a lot of green space on the site, but we try and maximize what we have. Again, trying to focus on the front. We mix deciduous and carnivorous plantings. We provide lighting on the building. It's shielded, DoCSG compliant. We try and provide a minimal of one-foot candle over the parking and circulation areas. And we have a couple of areas of minor spill-over, but those are less than half a foot candle, and they're on City of Peabody property, not on any of the residential waters. This is the landscaping plan, showing that we've been proposing shrubs to kind of hide the building foundation as you go down the hill, also on the lot line, but set back far enough that they don't impact any of the sightlines. Street trees regularly spaced along the front of the building to really enhance the streetscape. Some pines with a deciduous tree in between on the back corner, and then trying to hide, as you're coming down the sightline, some screening to that dumpster path, which is also going to be fenced in with a solid wood fence. This is the lighting plan. The half-foot candle is the lightest shade of orange here. All building-mounted, trying to maintain coverage over the the walking areas for pedestrians. And these are the two small areas of spill-over right at the driveway, illuminating the driveway entrance, and then in this back corner here, on the right-of-way on the Public Works yard.
Before Dave, if I may, through the chair, before Dave Seber begins his architectural presentation, I just want to highlight something very important Tony just said. And it's this notion that what we propose is a vast improvement over the existing condition, particularly with regard to how we handle stormwater. Right now, there is no stormwater treatment on-site. And given the topography of the property, the water literally sheets off from Endicott Street to the back of the site. We're going to be treating that stormwater on-site, and that's going to help those folks who are somewhat adjacent to the property on the Berry Street side, where they are the recipients of that sheeting effect, not only from this property, but others. So just from that alone, and then, of course, we have the landscaping attributes. Those two things alone create a market improvement over the existing condition, and and I think that it's important enough to highlight that at this moment. So through the chair to the rest of the board, Dave, if you could give your presentation. Thank you.
Sure. Hi, this is Dave Seber from BK Architects, one-forty-two Crescent Street in Brockton. Will you unmute? Can you hear me? Is everybody able to hear me?
Yes.
Yes, you're all set.
All right. Yeah, I guess the
I kept going, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
The main strategy here was to work with the topographies we pointed out earlier, and take advantage of that grade change from Endicott down to the rear of the site, where we're able to have a large proportion of the parking spaces as covered spaces for a nice amenity, and then use that grade as well to add additional spaces on Endicott's level with its own egress garage access. And then, as the slight, our slope of the site advances towards the lobby, sort of in the northerly direction, as you can see at this end of the building, but that's where the lobby takes place, at the higher end, where we're able to split up the grade level and Endicott Street level and give it maximum height available. So we were able to screen all the parking quite well from Endicott Street view. The single-story portion at the front, which is the lobby, and portions of a couple of units along the street, would kind of echo a similar height of the existing building, slightly set back, and then take advantage of some of the depth of the site to move the major masses away from the street. We pointed out some of the landscaping beds available along the street, soften up that pedestrian way, and then stepping back at the plaza level that was pointed out to give the entire building a little relief from the street and vice versa. So that's a common patio area for the entire facility. The vestibule, as you can see, is right off of Endicott Street and here, and we enter the building with a mail and package room. There's a main lobby and a couple of live-work spaces where residents can choose to use a little private office if they so chose to escape their unit. And on each level, we'll have a lounge, which will face the rear of the building and have a small balcony as well. On that first level, there were four units, and then as we move up, there's a typical floor plate that you see here that is, what did we say? Sorry, sixteen units on each level. And that's typical all the way up, so you'll see the elevator shaft and main stair, where at the center of the building, with the common lounge space, and then everything circulates off of that. There's a larger facility on each floor as well. There aren't any exterior balconies other than the common one, as just pointed out, and then there's one outdoor space along the Endicott Street first level, just adjacent to the entrance. And the exterior, well, obviously, we have one bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom units. They all stack up along the same plane. You can see the green, for example, is a one-bed unit and one bath, all fairly typical, and then we also have a studio, you can sort of see, there's one studio unit across from the elevator tower, and then And then we have two beds on the flanks and then a three-bed in the corner that stacks. The only real other amenity in the building is some storage space for bicycles, et cetera, at the garage level. And that is a two-way in-and-out garage space. So it's nice and secure at that level. As far as the exterior, it's all, as we were talking about earlier, mostly fiber cement and metal panel. We have CMU breeze blocks surrounding the parking level for airflow at the Endicott Street spaces. And there's also a mixture metal panel as well for some accents, et cetera, and our purple windows. So I think that's the summary of the building itself. This is typical section showing the construction. This view shows you the access down behind the building for the main garage level and then an entry and egress or exit garage bay for the upper-level parking. I think that explains most of it.
That, Madam Chair, through the, through you to the rest of the board concludes our presentation. You're on mute.
Thank you, Jason. Okay, Jason, that was great. So members of the board, would you like to ask any questions now? Okay, Barry, go ahead.
I just, just an explanation, I guess, not a question. I know the existing, right now, was existing as an industrial use, but it was a very limited industrial use. I think they had maybe four employees, four or five employees at the most. They made those things that you fix your tires with. I missed how you said it could decrease during the peak hours from a use that had four employees to 68 units. I don't understand, I don't understand that math. So did I miss something or could you just explain that to me again?
So it's based off of the land use type. They have an existing non-conforming use. The use hasn't expired. They could go open tomorrow with a general light industry use and generate that much traffic. Previous uses, the most recent use was a moving company, is that correct?
A moving company, E&amp;A.
And the box company. So those were fairly light uses. However, uses prior to that were more along the general light industry and that's what you would use for the basis of the-
I would disagree that you would use what's existing today as opposed to what's going to exist if we, that, when we approve the development. I mean, I think it's good to compare apples to apples and we have apples right now. We don't, oranges aren't going to come to that building. It's non-conforming.
He'd be forward in his right to move some other tenants in there. However, right now, given that there was a previous development proposed and the current development, that's the basis for, it's an industrial zone project and that's how you would come up with the existing. We provided, we understand that there are some traffic issues out there. So we provided the basic requirement from the ZBA, which is an existing and proposed trip generation study. We assume that the board's going to want to send us out for peer review. And a peer review consultant usually specifies exactly what they want studied, whether it's the large intersection or one of the other intersections. So rather than jump the gun, we kind of rely on some of the institutional knowledge of DPS as well as the peer review consultant to specify exactly what they would like studied.
Okay, because I really don't think, you know, speaking to some of the residents here, I don't think they're really against anything that's, you know, affordable housing. It's just, I guess, I don't know, maybe size or whatever, traffic or whatever, something that we can reduce down. But that's for later discussions. But I do have a question through the chair to Kurt. Kurt, what percentage are we at now? Did we get the recent numbers in yet?
Yes, Kurt Belavance, Director of Community Development. Yes, we actually submitted, once the Farm Ave project got approved, we submitted that and we're at actually 10.1% right now.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. I have no further questions right now. No questions right now. No more comments, I promise.
Anybody else from the board at this point before we go on? Okay, so Jason, what I'd like to do is schedule, what I'd like to do is schedule the second meeting and at that point have all the abutters that would like to speak and also invite the city officials. I'm looking at, and this is for everybody on the board also, I'm looking at Monday, June 14th. So that would be a Zoom meeting. We're going to start face-to-face June 21st. So we will have two meetings in June, if that's okay. The 14th would be Zoom to continue 40 to 42 Endicott for abutters and city officials. And then June 21st would be face-to-face at City Hall for a regular ZBA meeting. Does that sound fine for everybody?
Madam Chair, it's fine from the development team.
Okay.
But after you pull the board, I just want to talk a little bit about hopefully jump-starting peer review so that we could get that started by June 14th.
Right. Okay, so let me just repeat. Everybody's all set with those two dates. So on June 14th, anyone that's listening, it will be a Zoom meeting for abutters and city officials. And June 21st will be face-to-face, finally, at City Hall for a regular ZBA meeting. All right then, Attorney Panos, go ahead.
So a couple of things, housekeeping in nature. If I could have the permission of the board to obtain copies of the letters that you accepted into the record through your clerk, Carla McGrath? That litany of letters that you, that you accepted. Hopefully, I can maybe get them tomorrow or whenever Carla has a chance to scan them in.
She'll send it right now to you.
Awesome. The second thing is authorization to proceed with peer review and work with Will Politz so that by June 14th, we'll have an agreement between DPS and the applicant and hopefully have all of our peer review consultants lined up on this with escrow payments made and, gosh, if lightning strikes, maybe even a couple of comments back. But I'm not holding my breath for that. That's a little aggressive, but at least-
I believe, I believe that that's, that's in the works. And you could probably call Will or this building department tomorrow or Kurt Belavance if you need any extra little details. But I believe that is in the works.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure. So, once again, next time, it will be abutters and any other participants and city officials. At this point in time, I need a motion to continue 40 to 42 Endicott Street until June 14th.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Let's see. No meeting minutes tonight. I need a motion to adjourn.
Through the chair before we adjourn?
Yes.
Have we sent out notices to all department heads requesting comments and concerns regarding Endicott Street?
It went out with the, it went out with the application. And Carla will tomorrow reiterate, check it out. If it needs to be redone, she will do that right away.
Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, that's a wrap, but I need, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I need a second. Thank you once again, everybody.
Thank you.
Yep, this will be, we'll see you on this in June. And everybody else, I will see you next week. Thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Good night.